Bonnie McInerney Slater.
Absent, excused.
Deborah Addy here. Dennis Shemansky.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Joe Bozzi.
Here.
Samantha Burnham, she's absent, excused. Brian Treppa.
Here.
Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agendas submitted this evening.
Joe, you second it?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minute, sorry, excuse me, minutes of the December 15th, 2021 meeting?
I'll make the motion and we go ahead and approve the minutes, December 15th, 2021.
I can't support because I wasn't there.
I'll support.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15th meeting and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing building. We are guided by section 27.05 of ordinance number 126. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present tonight. At least three members constitute, whoops, excuse me. At least three members must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within 30 days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish. So we have new business. The first one is new business at Jay ZBA 2021. I don't know if that's supposed to be 22, but dash 023 applicant from 7864 Stark. Anyone representative would like to come up and state your name and?
Me, Tim Sheron.
Yep, came up here, sorry bud. Six, seven, 7867 Stark?
I thought it was 64.
64. Well, it says on here 7867 Stark.
Yes, that's for the variance for the setback, basically. Just want me to state what I want done, or?
Yep.
Okay, basically, I just bought the lot there, and obviously my two neighbors are here too, and they don't want me to stick out in front of them, which I understand that. You guys had that new ordinance that you had to go to a common setback. So if you take, if you look at a satellite view, most of the houses are in straight line and stuff, other than my two neighbors. My one neighbor on the right, basically, his house sits back like eight feet back from the right-hand side, and the other one's probably 20 feet back. But if you go down like two more, and you draw a straight line, they're all basically parallel. And then this, this new zoning ordinance, she said that unless there's excessive setbacks. And I believe personally that both of those houses got excessive setbacks, because there's no way for them to even park a car in front. That's kind of why I want to move the house out in front. So you get parking for like one or two cars in front, which we have trouble with parking and stuff, you know, on that street and everything. So that's kind of why I want to move the house out. It's only like eight feet in front of the neighbor's house, but obviously one neighbor's, he's sitting almost on the road, so he has a big problem with that, and I understand that, so. I guess all you can do is take it from there, hear from them, then.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Probably gonna have more comments, just have a seat, we'll get back to you in a second.
Okay.
So open up the public comment on this. Anyone wish to speak on this issue? Please come up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Brent Myers, and I'm at 7863 Stark Drive, which is just the east of this property. And so if he extends his house past the line of sight, that's going to interrupt my view. And so I just wanted to say that I'm not in favor of that, so.
Your view where?
On the, looking out to the west of my house, it would be, I'm in, all of our houses are pretty much lined up across there, and as he, as his house moves forward, obviously it's going to block my westerly view that I'm used to now.
Over his property line, though? Because your view is straight out.
Well, but the ordinance talks about the line of sight, doesn't it?
No, there's no, there's no 45-degree angles anymore, it's just you have, your view is straight out of your property line.
Doesn't, doesn't your, didn't you guys make an ordinance saying that you can't cross a line of sight from one house to the next? That there is, if you put a string between the house to the west and the house to the east, that he couldn't cross that line of sight, isn't that correct?
I'll get that verified in two seconds.
I'm sorry?
I'll ask Gary on that one in two seconds.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I will, I'll ask, the building official, I'll ask him on that one.
Okay, very good.
He'll come up after, after you open it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Scott Walgrave, 7873 Stark Drive. I live on the other side of the vacant lot. First of all, I want to thank you for a year ago for passing a law that protected us, that stopped people from building out beyond the neighbor's house. I know this happened about a year and a half ago, and again, I would thank you for that. And on our street, all the houses are basically in a straight line. From my house down, they're.
On water or on the roadside, are they?
On the water side. They're all in a straight line.
Okay.
And according to the law, we would just like to keep it that way. That Clay Township passed. We would like to keep it that way. The way, you know, everyone else is, because this doesn't just affect his house, it affects other houses on the other side of him also.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're opposed to it?
I'm opposed to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this comment, or this?
Hi, Joe Henninger, 7317 Dyke Road. I'm about 75 feet from his property, across the canal. You know, I have quite an investment in the island there with the restaurant and whatnot, and, you know, I'm very much interested in what's going on with Stark Drive. They were very interested in what was going on, you know, when I was building. But to me, you know, what's good for the township really is to, you know, get some new properties, and that raises taxes and things like that. In this particular case, I'm very familiar with the property, I went and looked at the property. You know, there is a hardship there in terms of parking, in my opinion. You know, someone's not going to want to build a nice property if you have nowhere to park a car. You know, as far as the line of sight, what I think they're looking for is, you know, the two houses right next door are set back from the other houses farther down. So if you draw the line on two houses down to the west, and I believe it's three houses down to the right, and follow that line, that's where his line would line up with. So to me, that's better than, you know, someone applying to build a boathouse that would have a side shield on it that would block more of the view of the lake. When I was here going through my approval process, one of the things brought up in one of the meetings was that canal frontage properties are not guaranteed their view where a lake property is. So if you have a lakefront house, someone can't build, my understanding, someone can't build a boathouse out there because it's blocking their view of the lake. But on a canal property, what was discussed in meetings was that they didn't have a view, and if someone wanted to build a boathouse out there, that they could, because they're looking straight out, as opposed to not just looking at the canal but seeing the lake. So I'm for it. I know both, I know all three people here, but I feel it's the best for all stakeholders in this situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? No problem. We have all night. That's the best line.
Fred Thompson, I, 7877 Stark, which is down two houses from them. One of my big problems in today is that people think that the rules that were written were written for somebody else. The lot that he's building on shouldn't be a lot to build on. It's too narrow, there's going to be lawsuits on this for years to come, because the water from one property is going to flow to the other one, okay? He bought it, and he bought it inexpensively because it wasn't buildable, or at least it wasn't buildable the way you need it. So now he has to come to you and say, oh, you know, like, give me a break, and I'm going to build it back. Well, you know what? Build it smaller. You want to park a car back there? Build it smaller. I'd really like to put a two-car garage behind my house, but the zoning says I can only have 490 square feet. That's a house and a half. The same time, I was at the Great Lakes, I'm sorry, St. Clair Shores International Meeting over the lake. And one of the things they said was that we're taking away all of the filtration system as we build, and we're putting in steel seawalls and taking away all of the natural filtration that comes from the waves washing against the thing, the shore. And it's like, you know, yeah, Stark was cottages a long time ago, but that doesn't mean that we're going to change every rule to make it something else. And I'm against it as much for the fact that the property shouldn't be built on. But if you want a garage, you want a car, make the house smaller. That's all you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Walgrave, 7873 Stark Drive. I am to the west of Tim's property. I wanted to let it be known that I have four vehicles, and my property is the same size as his. I have no problem parking four cars. There is no parking issue, problem. And like Fred said, the property wasn't really buildable. It's a narrow lot. You want parking space? Make your house smaller. Don't come past mine, please. That was the law that you guys wrote. Thank you, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Just to clarify, we didn't do the laws, or we didn't do the ordinance, as you guys. But the, someone did over here. Anyone else want to speak on this? Oh, hang on, Tim, hang on. Anyone else? Any new?
That letter.
We got a letter here.
Oh. You read it. Please.
Clay Township has a letter here that says, "Good morning, Cindy, please confirm you received my email. Thank you for sending me this notice. I am the owner or the property owner located at 7875 Stark Drive, and I am opposed to granting this variance as shown below. The reason is that this, these property laws were written to protect homeowners on each side adjacent principal structures having the views of their properties obstructed from other homeowners. In addition, the laws prevent other homeowners from taking advantage of putting their homes anywhere on their property they choose without regard to the neighbors surrounding them. As a note, when I built my home at 7913 Stark, prior to selling it, I had to abide by the laws so as not to obstruct the views of the neighbors on both sides of the home I was building as well. My building plans had to be approved by the township to make sure they were within the guidelines of the law. Thank you for your consideration of my variance."
And that's from Dennis, nope.
Rousen?
Rousen, yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Do you have something to add, Tim, or, because we're probably going to have questions for you?
Do you even have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if you had that or not. Basically, show everything in a straight line where I want to build.
All right. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Gary, come on up, please. I know. So first. Brett, Brent? Brent. I want to clarify on this, is site, his, I know we don't have the 45-year, or 45-degree anymore, so his house is set back, so if we built the house in front, is that correct? That he can't see through? Is that?
Well, what they did in 2020, and I don't have the exact date in front of me, is that section 3.11 was brought into play, and they called it the straight line setback. And that was protect mainly the older neighborhoods that had houses all over the place. And what they tried to do is line them up, so that even though, yes, we look at Supreme Court and they go, you know, your view is straight ahead, what this was really developed for was to open that up a little bit, give everyone a little bit more of a view, you know, than they may have. So that's when they kind of, this is in our one district, it's a 40-foot setback, and that's where Tim wanted to build it to, is the 40-foot from the seawall. And with the other houses to either side, it's not that drastic. But to draw a line from the corner, from one house to the other on either side, that's what really the, the design for 3.11 was for, to straighten that out, so everyone had kind of a opened-up view.
So even if that, if everybody was at 35 feet, that 40-foot wouldn't, wouldn't take effect?
We could move it up to 35 feet, then.
So in this case, it's obviously the opposite effect.
Moving back a little bit, yes.
And that goes to that St. John's Drive job, probably. That answer your question, your, a little bit? All right, because I didn't want to speak out of the ordinance, I mean, I didn't memorize every ordinance here, so.
You know, I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I noticed on the map on this that the property, the river line of it curves out. Where how, if you look further down, some of the houses are more to the, to the line of the property, as it goes up further. We had two other cases that we had the similars, or a little bit more dramatic, I should say, the one over there, North Channel, 2500 block, North Channel, a few years ago, about the same thing, and they're right there in the curve, about doing the eye, the latest, the eye, the sight line. So we, instead of following the houses, we were following more of a line of the river or the curvature of the property. And the same thing over there on the South Channel, we just did a year and a half ago, over there with, right there at South Point, next to South Point, it was the same thing, right there with the curvature coming around the bend, and we used that same type of riverbend as our straight line, as to determine what was a yard setback.
Yeah, we gave them a little bit better on the setback, on the side yard, on that.
But, um.
With the curvature of the lake, I got you, or lake channel.
But so I, you know, I would consider those, taking those two considerations, or those two policies that we've done before, not policies, but things that we filed before, and, you know, he's, is doing the 40-foot setback. He's not asking for 35 or 30, you know, which.
Right.
That's a lot of the cases that come in front of us. So he just gets a house designed for, for the, fits that lot, and our setback requirements, and the old, the practical difficulty is, is these other people are too far behind, but if you follow the river, you know, the curvature of the property going up, you know, out to the lake, he's conforming. And if you take the majority, you know, of the line, if you look at the overview on it, you can see it just kind of, just kind of.
This is 100% buildable lot, right?
It is buildable.
So that takes care of a question that we.
It's just a matter of size.
Buildable for, we make.
Matter of size is a part of it.
Yeah, but this, this 311 shows exactly what you're supposed to do to get the, the straight line. And they knew those houses were in that condition and that placement. I mean, it's pretty straightforward to me, that it's got to be within that line.
Toss between, I feel for both sides, and.
Right.
I really do, because.
You got to realize that a year and a half ago, just to throw this in, you know, an ordinance change was made in 3.11 to try to increase that for everybody. So, you know, that's what it was designed for. Take out more of the curvature of property or whatever, and, and go more after the straight line of the buildings themselves.
And we're, I mean, not to bring up stories, but, I mean, we're building a house in New Baltimore, or in Fairhaven, and the building inspector said, you go to the setback period, because if that person next to you tears down, he's, he's going to have to move up to the setback. He wouldn't let me go with the straight line, I was trying to.
I don't think they have.
I mean, it was just opposite.
Ordinance in play.
It's, it's opposite effect on it.
That's got nothing to do with us.
No, no, I'm just, that's why I'm, like, it's reverse for, on both ends, I see both sides of, both sides of it.
But that's a whole different township or city. You got to do what, what theirs say.
Any more questions for me?
I think we're good, thanks, Gary.
Well, just for my point of interest, I went down to look at that property, and I had a heck of a time trying to find the addresses, but I couldn't find them. You know, where's, where's the vacant lot? It's a little, it had like gravel on it or something. I went up and down, up and down, looking for the addresses. It's.
Yeah, across the street, there was no address, right?
Right.
And then that one didn't really have.
Yeah, it was terrible. It was terrible to try to find what was, what I was supposed to find, so.
Well, it's not a wide, it's not wide, so it probably looks like.
It's obvious, because there's nothing there.
Yeah, yeah.
Get addresses.
I have my address, is right on my.
Actually, I think we can get the reflector ones on your mailboxes, right? Well, from now on, what we'll do, you guys, and we'll, Joanne, what we'll do, we'll have vacant lots poster address, so we can make sure we're looking at the right.
Right stuff, yeah.
So, good change on that one. So, I mean, hardship, parking, you got to be able to park.
I don't think the parking's.
I mean, I agree, build a smaller house. I agree, you know, you know, he, you know, it's okay to go a little bit bigger, and it's, you know, going to be an asset to the neighborhood, but.
Yeah, I agree on that, I mean, it'd be an asset to the township.
Oh, it's, no matter what he builds there, it's.
But that could be, they brought up all the time, I guess, you know? I mean, I'm just looking at this ordinance, or it's.
And the ordinance is definitely there to protect the people that are not up to the current setbacks. Correct? Gary?
Yeah, it's to protect the neighbors, you know, either side.
Well, if you read this here, "The endpoints of the straight line shall be established from the corner on each adjacent structure that is closest to the waterfront, and to the other adjacent structures." Closest. So just because these two people here are set farther back is not what it says here, is this.
Adjacent. Yeah.
No, it says, but it says this, "Straight line must be established from the corner of each adjacent structure that is closest." So I mean, it's, again, it's how it's being. See how everything just curves?
One's at eight, one's at 20? Tim?
Pardon?
One's at eight, one's at 20?
Uh, the one on the west side, even with that, it's a second, I think it's eight feet or something, I'm still, I'll be eight feet in front of this deck, basically, but the other one's probably 20 or something, but what's going to happen, another question is, what's going to happen when he sells and they want to go out further, you know?
100%. Oh, 100%.
And I'm already at 62 feet or 65 feet, I can't remember exactly, off the seawall, you know, excessively set it back right now.
That's 15 feet further than he's supposed to be?
Yes.
Or could be?
Yeah, it's 25.
25?
It's 40.
Oh, I thought you said 40.
65 feet.
40, 40-foot setback?
Yeah.
So you said 65?
Yeah, 25, 25.
That's right?
Yeah, that's.
It's 65 here, and it's shorter on the side, but the view line cuts across here.
I don't have that page.
Oh, it's on the flip, oh, here, you can use this.
I had to print it off.
So here's the corner of this guy, in the straight line.
Well, I see that, I saw it out there, it just didn't look bad, it looked 25 feet.
About there, because this is a deck. If you go by with Dennis, Dennis, then it's here.
Is that deck at 40 feet?
I'm sorry?
Is that deck on your neighbors at 40 feet?
No, they're in, so if I'm at 65, they're probably at 70, or 72 feet back off the seawall. So that deck's a little.
Well, it looks like, on your plot plan, it looks like the deck's in front of the house that you're willing to propose.
Yeah, it's not to the edge of the house. So that, the front of that deck is probably, I would say 60, 58 feet off the seawall.
Why can't you go off of the deck? With your straight line view?
That deck's getting torn off. Okay, on the, we're talking on, right hand of the waterside, can I approach here something, joke there?
I see it, I mean, this deck right here.
Yes.
That deck?
That deck, yes.
Why can't you go off of that furthest point? They were allowed to build out that far, why, why can't we go off of that for the straight line?
Further out than what I want to put.
But is that deck at 40 feet?
No, it's at like, probably 60 feet.
So it's still further. Gary, why can't we go off of the deck?
3.11 says the main structure.
I'm having a hard time finding a practical difficulty.
Really?
It's because he wants to build a certain size in this and wherever, it's, you know, not the thing to do, in my opinion. He's got three or four different addresses and lots all over the place, and, so I find it to be quite complicated to get what he, what he wants to do, so I'm opposed to it.
Well, it's not complicated, Joanne, he's building a house on the law.
Right, no, it's not complicated.
Trying to do the setbacks, but then we have one ordinance that's stopping him from doing a setback. I mean, just because you couldn't find the lot, doesn't mean you have to disagree with it.
No, no, I, yeah, maybe I didn't word that right, but he can build, but he can't build exactly what he wants. he can build, but he can't build exactly what he wants.
Tim, what is it off of the, the shortest? You went off the furthest point of your seawall. What's it off the shortest point?
The shortest point?
Because that's what is, you're gonna be taken off of that anyways. What's the shortest point where your boat well is? If you ran, if you went across your boat well?
If you ran across boat well, it would probably be, I'm at sixty-five now, it would probably be like ten feet shorter or something like that.
So, you're at, say, fifty-five feet and you, and you can go all the way up to forty?
Yes.
So, you look at the, beyond the garage.
Forty-four feet. Is that right? Tim, you got forty-four feet of driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're gonna get two cars on the front of the house.
So, that parking's not an issue.
Well, that's not his complaint or his issue anyhow, so. Again, here we have a R one forty foot setback.
Parking with the trailer.
Yeah, but it's. Again, I made the point about as far as how the, the natural curvature of the property is.
There is no curvature.
Yeah, it's not much.
It's, it is slight. If you look at this, if you look at a different map than what it was provided.
It's eight feet difference from one length to the other length, so.
And it keeps growing as it goes out farther to the lake.
It is cur, I mean, it's, might not look curved, but it's eight feet longer on one side than the other.
Yeah, I Googled it.
Well, I'm looking at the plot plan and this is supposed to be a hundred percent accurate. Tim, do you know how far, uh, the person's house that does not have the deck on the plot plan? So, looking at it. Right here, how far is that off the seawall? Right here.
Um, it's, um, that would be two doors down.
No, right next door.
Right next door.
Right next door.
If I'm at sixty-five off of it, and obviously the seawall's going out further, it's probably seventy, seventy-five feet or something. Probably another ten feet or something like that.
So, it appears to me that the houses are going out as the, as the curvature, the houses are coming out according to the lake, according to the seawalls?
Yeah, so it kinda looks like.
Roughly, I mean, I know I'm going off of a deck here. I'm going off a deck, which I, I can't take that in consideration right now.
Yes, they're all sticking out.
But he still has it out there and it's still a view, you know, and it's still, he could put a, something on that to, to block. I, I'm just. A toss between the forty foot, you guys, that he's allowed to go to, right?
Right, yeah.
We have the ordinance that we're, we need to abide by the ordinance of the straight line setback. But in the same token, these are excessive and it's, I say in our ordinance, it, it, they're too excessive. He is trying to follow the curvature of the, the lake or the seawall. The, it's eight feet difference from, it's one eighty-eight on one side, one eighty on the other side.
If you turn, uh, turn it over, that page, turn it over, what you're looking at. See how it keeps jetting out and jetting out and jetting out? Property lines. It's not dramatic, but it does move out.
Yes, no, it, it, it all juts out.
Right.
The other, the other house is set, you know, other house next to the one with the deck is out further too.
Right. That's why I said the hardship.
And then it goes out further than that on the next one.
The practical difficulty.
I, I still think that he's building within what the whole lot is doing, what the whole property's doing.
Right, I agree a hundred percent. That's why this is the practical difficulty.
Except that we have an excessive one that's back further. Tim, you gotta tell me exactly what that measurement is from the one side. Is it, one side is sixty-five feet? You gotta scale it for me and give me the other side.
And on my lot where I wanna set the house, is what you're asking me?
Yeah, because sixty-five is just, you know what I mean? That's, that's a good, that's a great builder's, you know what I mean? I, I, I know what you, you know, I want the short side.
Because the wall is going in on there.
It's eight feet difference. I know, but I'm saying it's an eight foot difference, so you, you're, you're not gonna get the same.
So, then I would be, uh.
See what I'm saying? You got sixty-five right here.
Yeah.
There's no way that this is sixty from here to here. You know what I'm saying? I want, I want that measurement from here to there, short to short.
Well, I can count that on me.
I know.
You know, if you're at sixty-five, you have to guess the angle and, uh.
I know, I don't have it.
And actually, the sixty-five is coming in five feet in.
True. I got, I see that. No, I see that.
So, actually, I'm further off than that.
But we still have to go off of the house.
Right.
So, that's why I was trying to get the short point to.
It's not gonna be under forty or anything like that. It has to be fifty-eight or something like that.
I'd agree with that, close to that. If you scale the sixty-five, take it, I agree that it's gonna be. Sixty-five, fifty-five. What if, what if we extended it to fifty-five feet setback for him? Instead of, he wants sixty-five right now. No, seventy-five. Pushing it back further, seventy-five feet. Am I saying that right?
No. He's at seventy-five feet now, or sixty-five feet now, and he, in minimum setback is forty and.
Yeah, yeah, I want him to come, I want him to be able to come, so fifty-five.
But it does see where I'm here. It doesn't even say how much he's out of line here. I'm just reading it. It's just, it just says the sight of line. It doesn't say how far back the setback is or anything. It's very vague on the description, what was submitted.
Yeah, what is the distance, Tim, between your sixty-five feet and the neighbors? I mean, I mean, we, we need to, in order to, to do a compromise here or some kind of like my throw out proposal. I, I don't have any ammunition. I, I need that numbers. You, you know what I mean?
Which neighbor are you looking at?
The one with the deck.
Oh, the one on the deck?
The one with the deck.
I'm eight feet in front of him. He's got like.
Eight feet in front, okay, you're eight.
Twelve foot deck, what do you got, twelve?
Sixteen.
Eighteen?
Sixteen.
So, I'm at his first pose basically. I'm eight feet in front of him.
And then you're twenty feet on the other one?
Yeah, it's quite good. That one's pretty much almost built on the road.
So. I, I don't think eight feet is excessive, but. The twenty is excessive.
With that line of sight, that twenty foot seems a, a huge distance.
I totally agree with you. To, I mean, I totally agree. I, I totally agree with you. But if you tore your house down, you could come up to forty feet.
I could come up forty feet off, if I, if I did, I would have to be in a line of sight between.
Hundred percent. No, no, I agree, but you would, you would be allowed to come up, you know, forty more feet than what you are right now. So, if you wanted to put addition on your house, you could come forty feet out close to the water right now. Without the line of sight rule, with just the setback rule.
Yeah, but we have a line of sight rule.
With the setback rule, I'm probably.
Yeah, I'm probably, I'm probably, I'm, I don't, I don't know. I might be, I don't think I'm sixty feet off the water. But my, my, the, the.
Yeah, well, yours is in, yours is a little angle, but it seems to be consistent where yours is here, Tim, the, the other neighbors is kind of on an angle.
Correct.
Following it, but what I'm saying is you're still giving up fifteen feet of setback. Tim, it would've been cheaper for you to put addition on his house and slid it over. The one with the deck. Oh, my God, this is such a tough one right here.
That deck's coming down in the spring.
Are you putting addition on?
No, well, yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, okay. This land's gonna work, yeah, it will.
The whole thing is if someone does buy a rental house, they're gonna add addition on at the front of it.
I don't mean to talk future, you guys, by no means.
Yeah, we can't talk future.
Uh, because I'm not asking you to do anything to, to tear down or to give one person, you know, or anything. I'm just, we're looking at a house right now that is giving up fifteen feet of a setback because of a rule, which I totally agree and understand the rule.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, sorry. I just see that it's still in the line except for the person with the deck and you're giving up twenty feet. I don't, I don't like the twenty feet. I don't like that part. That's a, that, that's a big view.
What's the practical difficulty?
Where do you want me to start? The forty, the practical difficulty started, one is, why are we not, it's not a straight line to start with the, the property and how it curves. I don't know why we are not, uh, using the same, um, thought processes as, uh. We understand it's, this, this is why we're here. Uh, because when the ordinance is, anything is designed or is, is in a perfect world, everything is left in, north, south, east, west, and you try and do, and you cover ninety-five percent of everything. Well, we can't, you can't have everything, um, fall under a hundred percent under the ordinance. It's, that's why unfortunately we are, uh, this board, because the ordinance doesn't always apply in every situation. And this is one of the examples here. The, um, the property is, like you said, uh, Gary had said, it's an R one, it's a forty foot setback. All right, so means forty, what that means is he could actually, if there was no rule site, he could push that back forty feet from the seawall and no problem. But the rule, the aligned, uh, site is to stop people from doing that kinda stuff, you know, going any further. In other situations where you had straight, well, the bird lanes, they're nice, straight, even properties all the way out. That's a very one easy to maintain is as far as the straight line, uh, aspect is goes, but when you have properties that, the other man said there about, these be just cottages and uh, water rolling in, washed away different property or part of the properties. It has a natural curve to the, to the landscaping of the properties, which is evident on the virtual maps. You should look from above. In other cases that we've used, we used that similar aspect as far as, because it's not in a perfect straight line. We have to follow what's upriver or downriver or upstream or downstream. So, that would be the practical difficulty. This ordinance is not in violation of, or granting this, it would not be in violation of it just for the fact that, um, he's, there's already other things that have already, uh, he's, has tried to do to be in accordance of our, you know, he's got the side setback, the left side, the right side, the rear setback, extended it from forty to sixty-five. I don't know where, how much more you want to give or take away, I should say.
Yeah, but this talks about his neighbors.
But it also says excessive and, and the ordinance that we're, where it gives us a.
The third paragraph says excessive.
The lingo that we could change. What, what, what if, what if we go up with, even with the guy that has the deck? Not the deck, the house. He goes a straight line across. One guy loses the twenty foot, now turns into twelve feet and Tim gains eight feet of house. Well, he'll lose eight feet of house, I should say. He'll come to a seventy-three foot setback instead of a forty foot setback. Follow me?
Yeah, so you're saying, so.
Come even with, because every, everyone's going on an angle, so unfortunately, one is excessively further back than, to me, it's excessive. Twenty feet's excessive. The other person with the deck is somewhat following in line and is actually, according to the pitcher, the furthest one out of all. Actually, his neighbor is a little bit, is mid-deck. Is mid-deck to him. See how this is straight right here? So, if Tim went straight here, it does. We do, you know, go twelve foot.
Well, here's another hard one.
It's not gonna be twelve. It's only gonna be.
Is how are you gonna, uh, stated on how far it's gonna be back from us, the property line then? So, if he's at sixty-five now on the proposed drawings, you're gonna say.
Right now, I, I would say if I were to be able to do a motion, I would go straight back off of the neighbor's house that has the deck, whatever that measurement is, with his setback, Tim's setback's gotta be three or five or ten or whatever it is, the side yard setback, even with that house, straight across.
Okay, so.
Straight across, on an angle, straight across right here. Straight across, right there. He loses a lot of his house. I mean, it is, it's, I mean, it is what it is. Another reason I say is because I believe that that twenty feet is a little excessive to be further back. Where that gentleman, that future whatever, has room to, to come out, to meet Tim's site, you know what I mean, without coming in front of us ever again. I just, it's, they're setback further. Four, forty feet is, they're, they're giving up a lot already, but I, I agree with the neighborhood.
So, what would be the practical difficulty then?
Well, it's easy to say a lot size.
Right, well, I'm just.
It's a, it's a. It's a, it's a good compromise. I, I just, there, there's, this is a.
I guess I must, would say, I would like to go ahead and make the motion, what Brian just said, and add to the practical difficulty being that, um, again, going with the, how the properties keep curving, um, out as it goes towards the lake and then keeping in mind that, and then his, how he's, um, drawing or stating the setback. So, I guess.
I'd want it stated though that, that on that side yard setback, if it's five feet or the ten foot, that's, that's what establishes a straight line going across. Because the site, his seawall is crooked, so you can't, you know, it's just a, a straight line, and I, I, without doing math, and we don't have any rulers here, the guy with the twenty...
I can run out to my van.
I mean, it looks like he's six feet, he's gonna be six feet further to the, on the house that is not with the deck.
So that's the number you think that we should go with, is six foot?
No, because these are all hypothetical numbers. I wanna go off of whatever that house is that has the deck, whatever that address is. What, who owns the deck? Can you tell me your address?
Seven eight seven three.
Seven eight seven three? Tim, are you understanding what I'm proposing?
Yes, but...
I know you don't like it, but...
Well, all those houses already have excessive setbacks, and actually in that, uh, in that ordinance, if you read down the second paragraph, that you don't have to abide by it, because houses have excessive setbacks in that ordinance.
But is it an average setback for each, each of the houses? If you look at that, that's, you know, the straight line going down, I, I know each, the, the seawall's crooked. We, we can all see that, we can all see that it's on an angle. So each house is going out further as the seawall is getting crooked, except your one neighbor, Brent. I'm sorry, he is, he didn't join the club on that one, you know, not, whoever built his house before, was a little bit further back, which is, to me, excessive, which that's why I'm hoping that we would be able to go to the setback that six eight seven three has, but you could go straight across versus having to cut back on an angle to meet Brent's straight line.
Let's see what you're saying.
To me, we can't, I mean, this is why that ordinance is in effect, this is why we have that ordinance. And, and, and I believe that everyone is on a straight line, has a little bit different setbacks, one is excessive, but I don't want you to go past the other. You, you know what I'm saying, so I'm trying to give a happy medium here, but one person can be mad, and the other person may eh, but in the same token, you're still gotta build a small house. And everybody wins.
That's why I came here, because I don't want both my neighbors to be pissed off.
Correct, and, and I'm, I'm, we're not the judge on the neighbors, I, I, I mean, that's not even influencing us, but there is the rule, and it's exactly for this particular, you know, idea. I just, I, we'll be talking about that one as far as, you know, the sixty-five feet, you know, there's a lot of room you guys are giving up towards the water, but, which is fine, that's, you know, here and there. So Dennis make...
I'll amend my motion to everything he said.
No, make it, say it in your words.
I, that is, I've already said it.
I know, but...
A dozen times, I'm, I got a sore throat.
Make us, so everybody at least votes on it, because if this goes south on us, we wanna...
So what was the address of, uh, the neighbor of the house that you wanted to use again?
Seven eight seven three.
Okay, that's what I did, right.
To the structure, you gotta say structure, not deck, we just call it deck, because it's, that's what I'm looking at with...
Principal structure.
Right.
So should I start over, or should I just amend it to the, put it in there about the, using the structure of seven eight seven three stark as a straight line, as far as the, the setback from that going towards the other neighbor's property? Using that line, I should say, doesn't that make any sense? You're gonna say set the house at that same line?
Correct.
Correct, all right.
Anyone second that? Okay, no second. Nope. If no one seconds this, no, no sense. All right, someone else make a motion?
I make a motion to deny it based on three eleven, how, how, how it's stated, based on the discussion.
I'll second you, Joe.
I was just gonna say, I, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny and a second, roll call please.
Brian Treppa.
No.
Deborah Addy, yes. Dennis Schamansky.
No.
Joanne Chirky.
Yes.
Joe Bozzi.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. All right. Moving on, new business, we have, I'll wait till you, you got it all? No problem. What was that? Do you have the number on that ordinance that you spoke, that you wrote, just that?
Yeah, it's real one.
Yeah, yeah, it does just when you want. Did everyone get these seats? Yeah. We're done.
That's it.
For you guys.
So ours denied, right?
Denied, yep. Sorry. I thought you guys were all, I, I look out, and they're looking at us, I'm like, oh, you guys are all... Oh my goodness.
Is that right?
Yeah, it was fun, and it's just fun, moved out here, and then realized, because you'd always lived out here.
Yes, yes.
And I realized that you were on every board that you could be on, and I just wanted to stick a vote.
Tell me your name.
It's Fred Thompson.
Fred Thompson.
Yeah, that was pretty...
He was a troublemaker.
You were a good guy.
Yeah, you know, I'd like, my mother thought that, anyway, but it was, uh, it was just fun, and...
Yeah, it was a good place.
Yeah. The next book, which is, I went to Western, truth be known, I had probably a D, took a history and religion, I probably had a D average. And I came out of Western with a four point.
Oh, hi.
And I had never heard anything for two years that I hadn't been taught, and which is, so it was like a, it was a pretty good thing.
Well, thank you for coming up and telling me that, yeah.
Was she a good teacher?
But we didn't have her, she was a visit teacher for...
Oh.
But we did watch that class.
We needed some dirt.
We knew how well she...
Gotcha. All right, so we gotta elect some officers here.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye.
Thank you. So...
Okay.
But it's probably not circled for your name.
Brian. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would still like to stay as chairman. I know, I know Bonnie has expressed interest in vice chair.
Okay.
That's good.
She, she did express that today.
Let's first vote on Brian.
Oh, I thought it was all. Yeah, I thought it was all.
We can do them all together? Okay. Oh, I don't know. Okay, everyone okay with nominating Brian?
Yes.
Yes. Bonnie for vice, yes.
Secretary.
Well, everyone's gotta vote for Bonnie.
We're gonna vote all at once.
Okay, secretary, somebody has to nominate somebody or volunteer.
I volunteer.
Perfect, I love volunteers.
I can't, I'm trustee.
Can you, trustee, you can, because you're a plan, right, that's, that's gonna...
I'm not a trustee.
So that's a plan, okay.
I'm just a plaintiff.
You're just a plan.
I'm just a plaintiff.
I'm kidding. Yes, okay.
Okay, everyone, Brian, Bonnie, Debbie, say yay or nay.
Yay.
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 Yay, okay.
Hey, guys. So that will change next meeting. What it changes is a...
It's effective right away.
Effective, go on. Okay, unfinished business? I don't think, I don't have anything, right? Sure, we don't have nothing that you, nothing on, uh?
No.
Your lovely report?
Yes, um, at the last planning commission meeting, we had a packed house, um, and the, and what was required of us was, um, to talk about the possibilities of trying to shrink the planning commission from nine members to seven. So it wasn't at that time a public hearing, it was just open for discussion, which there was a lot of conversations, although we did have people come up, and next meeting is the twenty-sixth, and that is a, a public, open to the public, a public hearing.
Twenty-sixth, what time is those meetings at?
That's a, that's a week from Wednesday.
Yeah, but what time are your meetings, seven o'clock?
Seven, mhm.
Okay, and that is just a vote to go from nine to seven?
Um, no, it's not a vote, it's a public hearing.
Just a public hearing, and then...
So whatever, then, there's a vote, and then that vote gets sent to the board of trustees to, um, have talked about it.
Voter for or against, okay, I got you.
And I don't know if they have a public hearing or not.
You have to say, we would like to go down to seven, or we wanna stay with nine, and then trustees can do it.
Yep, that's our recommendation to them, and that's twenty-sixth.
Is there anything else on that's hot item right now? I would like to know, like...
The hot item is...
Without telling me what, what you're doing, just like, if there's like a, another Cabana Blue out there.
No, not that I'm aware of, but I know there's a hot button for, um, having the five-year plan for the recreation, apartment, or if you will, there's a lot of, lots of things coming up with that. They're buying more property, um, they're doing all sorts of things on Harrison's, there, there's things in engineering for, um, that, um, canoe park, um, let's see what else, um, I think they're acquiring more...
You mean kayak park?
The kayak park, mhm. So that's, that's a big deal, that whole parks and recreation, and so we're gonna dig into that. The only other thing that I didn't see was how do we communicate that snafu that we went through, that we, that ordinance is a loophole from a month ago?
So that's a typo, that's a typo, that's something that, when I believe someone that looks at the ordinances, trust me, it came up in a meeting we had, that you guys already, planning already looked at the ordinances, they made their changes, that's all said and done, obviously that one slipped through.
Correct.
So I don't know who does the proofreading, I don't know the rules on it, but as we see a typo, it is in public, my public, that, that typo is not gonna be accepted for a, a very, you know, that's not gonna be a variance, that's, so that's, to me, I don't wanna, you know...
I don't know how that gets fixed.
I don't know, um, I know we're, there's still some turmoil out that we have to get through, but that will have to get changed really quick through, you know, the planning commission, get down to the ordinance, you know.
Other than that, I don't know of anything that's coming up.
I, okay, just because if somebody watches just the ZBA meeting today, I want them to be aware that, hey, there might be a, a subject to go look at for the planning, that was it. Because I did miss, you know, one, when you guys did review ordinances, I probably would've spoke and changed some verbiage, or, or asked...
Sure.
To add or subtract some verbiage, so, okay?
That would be great, it's always good to hear public comments.
Well, I just, I didn't know that you guys were doing it, and that, that's the only, you know, when I found out that you already did it, I'm like, huh!
Well, that was a while ago, so that, that was...
Maybe eliminate somebody to come in front of us.
So, um, I can't even comment on how that went.
But the twenty-sixth is your meeting, so...
Yes, and I know fences got kicked back from, waterfront fences got kicked back from the board. They didn't like, um, having to come back and do a, a, not a public hearing, a, what do you call those? An approval from planning. They, they wrote it, so if you wanted a waterfront fence, you had to come back before planning and do a, not a site plan, but, uh... A what? Thank you, a special approval.
And the trustees...
Trustees didn't like that.
Said no, okay.
Correct.
So that's back into the...
Correct, yes.
Rewrite stage, okay? So right now, basically, it's just a hot item of nine to seven members?
Yes, that's pretty hot.
Okay, oh yeah, it'll be fun the twenty-sixth.
Mhm, I won't be there.
All right, any other things for you guys?
There's a lot of stuff going on right now with, you know, the people on the island that wanna come and voice their opinion about the planning commission, so it's, it's kinda in a...
Little turmoil.
You know, you were at the meeting.
Bonnie did get, no, not Bonnie, Kathy Swinburne did get reappointed.
She did or did not?
Yes, she did, and the trustees, they reappointed her.
Yeah.
So that, half of the...
That was a big deal.
Hot items should stop, right? So what's the other hot item?
Just what we're going to do from nine members to seven. And then we have to figure out, well, who are those members that we're gonna shrink, if it wants to shrink, don't know.
Gotcha.
I don't know how that works.
Well, we won't do anything until our, we had, we didn't even have seven people. We had five people on the board meeting the other night, two nights ago.
Yeah, I don't know how they'd go, they would have, probably have to amend the ordinance, I suspect.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
If they all wanted to do that.
Well, in all the years, planning committees never had a proud...
Yeah, I got you, yeah.
Right.
They've always had everybody there, so...
Um, all right, anything else from us, public comment? Gary, all good out there? Holding the fort down for us? Thank you, close public comment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, guys.